I ain't got no prize for.
And the black shirt.
Oh, better than coffee.
Good morning. I would like to call to order the Pasco County Board of Commissioners 10 o'clock meeting on December 5th, 2023. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your phones. Prior to proceeding, I would like to take a moment to recognize a valued member of Operations Division who we tragically lost last week. Our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family and his fellow team members during this difficult time. Now, please rise for the indication and pledge.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty of us all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Here.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey. District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Here.
District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Here. And I have a 10-10 time certain, but I know Withlacoochee is here, so Withlacoochee River Electric, would you please come forward? Like I say, Merry Christmas to you gentlemen. You do a phenomenal job with the county, as you always have, and this is a special time of year where you take care of your customers as well as the county, being one of the customers.
Merry Christmas. Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners. Administrator Carbala, Clerk Souls, and Attorney Stein-Snyder appreciate you allowing us to be here this morning. And with me, I have, who doesn't not need to be introduced, but Mr. David Lambert, our Executive Vice President and General Manager. David?
Commissioners, we just want to wish you all Merry Christmas and thank you for the great partnership that Withlacoochee has had for decades. We're all committed to our members and the citizens of Pasco County together to do great things for this county. So, thank you all so much for everything you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And it's good to see our Commissioner Bradford back on the dimes.
Back at you, brother. Yes, sir. Nice to see you this morning.
Nice to see you guys. And Merry Christmas, by the way.
Merry Christmas. As you know, Withlacoochee is proud to be based in Pasco County. We're a member-owned, not-for-profit electric utility. We had another year of growth, averaging over 700 accounts a month, and we've been successful with that despite supply chain constraints, as you all experienced yourselves. Some of the things we do, educational foundation, we donated 152,000 to Pasco Hernando State College for their ball field lighting. We awarded 110 $12,000 scholarships, valued at over 1.3 million. Of those 62 were in Pasco County, those were worth about 744,000. So, since that program's inception, we have awarded 2,414 scholarships, valued at 18.5 million dollars. Our charitable foundation, WREC Cares, helped 12 families this year. Since that program's inception, we've awarded 2.45 million, helping 673 families through catastrophic events that were no fault of their own. We've also partnered this past year with the Boy Scouts, Habitat for Humanity, Mid-Florida Community Services, Special Olympics, United Way, and many other agencies, helping to better the communities that we serve. We all experienced the hurricane this past year. We did have some flooding and damage, but obviously, it was, thank God, there was no loss of life. Our employees right now are busy finishing up with Withlacoochee's Angel Tree Program, which we're very proud of, very proud of our employees, all they do in the community as well. We will soon be providing toys, clothing, and necessities for children so they can also experience the joy of Christmas. Once again, thank you for our excellent working relationship with the Board Administration and your, and your great staff. They do a great job. This year, we have a record refund of 23.2 million. About that, Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, we have the big fake check here. If you can fold this, Am Scott's right down the road. 352,760 dollars and 31 cents.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yep. I just wanted to say, Joe and David, both of you, the working relationship that the county has with WREC has been a great relationship for many, many years. And we've got a lot more to do, but we know that y'all are prepared, and when the growth comes, you're ready for power when we need it, and utilities, so very important. And I hope we continue this right on, so.
Yes, sir. We will. We appreciate that. Thank you.
And like I say, for all the years, Withlacoochee's been just the best partner the county's ever had. For as far as utility go, you are the number one. What you do for the community, what you do as far as keeping rates low, the effectiveness of everything, and your community involvement is unparalleled, unbeaten. So, I thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Should we all go up for picture?
Thank you very much.
We're going to come up for picture?
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm in just in time for the.
The most important time.
My dog got out. I'll drive him down here.
Mike, coming up?
Commissioner Bradford's coming.
Have a present for you. Wow.
We already found the.
You gotta realize, that's a lot of money.
We are a little trashed.
Well, my sheep opened their mind.
I never seen a roach.
I sat on one bush.
It was in a neighbor's garage, and I don't know.
Everybody right here.
Right here.
Thank you very much.
We've got toys for shots.
Taking that back.
Yeah.
Where'd she go?
There she is.
Mr. Stein-Snyder, would you please go over today's proceeding with the BCC?
Mr. Chairman, today's, today is your annual reorganization. The Chair and Vice Chair will be elected, as is the practice and governed by your procedural rules. The Chairman and Vice Chairman shall be elected annually at the organizational meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. This election, this year, is held at your first meeting, at your meeting in December. The Clerk will serve as Chair for the election of the new Chairman of the County Commission. Once the Chair is elected, the Chair will take over the role for the meeting, and will a election for Vice Chair shall ensue. Before we start that, is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on reorganization?
Wow, have we ever done that before? Take comment?
Seeing none, I would hand it over to the Clerk and Comptroller to conduct the election.
Okay. He's going to pick up this gavel here and make it real official. I'm going to open up nominations for Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners for Pasco County. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Ron Oakley.
Second.
Okay. So, nominations don't need to be voted on, but I have a nomination.
Don't need to be seconded.
Don't need to be, don't need to be seconded, but I think we have the motion from Commissioner Bradford for Commissioner Oakley. Are there any other nominations? Rules require a second calling, so this is my second calling for any nominations, other nominations for Chairman of the Board. All right, hearing none. A vote is not necessary. We have our next Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, Mr. Ron Oakley.
Jack comes here, goes there.
I go all the way down.
You go here, and then, yeah.
And. Chairman?
Yeah.
It was plugged into this app.
Is that my water there?
There was a copy for everyone. I think he's, I don't know if he's bringing his copies.
I forget where you're going.
You go to what?
I go right here. I'm always either on one side or another, depending.
I will say that I'm happy to be back. I wasn't very far away, but it's good to be back. This is my third time in eight years, so I'm very proud to be Chairman. I'm very proud to be a part of this commission, and we've had a great commission for eight years that I've been here. So, we continue very good work, and work looks after our citizens. So, with that, I would open up nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Commissioner Bradford for Vice Chairman.
Okay. Motion? Second?
No, you don't need a second, but you need to, you need to call for other nominations.
Are there any other nominations?
Do a second call.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing none, so we don't need a vote?
Nope.
That's correct.
Okay.
You just call it.
So.
You declared the Commissioner Bradford.
Mr. Jerry Bradford, I declare you Vice Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Proud to have you aboard. Now, we'll find out where I'm at, so.
Okay. We will now go to the public comment. This is a time that, let me see, instead of just repeating it as I know it, but. I don't see it on here. All right, I'm back a page. All right, now it's time for public comment. Since we're given the opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the Board of County Commissioners, and any other business according to the Board's purview. Today's comment, public comment, will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those here in person. Then, we will take comment from those on the WebEx link, and then are currently on queue. We request that when you address the Board, you keep your comments are not directed toward a Board Member or against a Board Member, but rather to the issues at hand. This provides mutual respect between Board Members and the public. After stating your name and address for the Clerk, you have three minutes with a timer. After two minutes, you will, you sound a beep, then you'll have one minute to finish. When your time is up, beep sound, and you will have to close your comments. WebEx persons will actually be cut off on the WebEx. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair. We do have no one signed up for WebEx this morning. We do have six individuals signed up, and we'll start with, I'll just announce the first three. If you could proceed to the podium, we have Leonard Lord, followed by Aisha McTowles, followed by John Hedden, or Hedon.
Greetings, Leonard Lord. I live at 9525 Sunbeam Drive. Been here for 73 years. It's an honor. Just want to say I thank you for the opportunity to share with you, and just before I forget, may you have a great Merry Christmas, and remember, Christmas is not a stress to spend money. It's when God sent His Son to bring us peace and goodwill on earth. Amen. And so, we do have a group that are here and really concerned about and appreciate y'all, that believe that man doesn't live by bread alone, but every word that proceedeth out the mouth of God, and that's where order comes. And so, we do pray for y'all. We meet every, twice a week, and pray, seeking God, for how we can help and serve. And so, I'm just thankful to be here. I want to read a letter that was sent out, and I know if you, you're probably like me and get more emails than I do. You can't filter through all of them, but this was an email that was sent out, that Pastor Jerry and I sent out, and so I'd just like to read this letter to you. I know some didn't get to get it. It says, "Dear Chairman and Commissioners, if you desire as directors of somebody who cares Pasco, we would like to make ourselves available to lead in prayer at commission meetings on the west side of the county, and make available the many ministries in our association to share in this as well, that they may have godly leadership and pastors who have a heart for you and Pasco, lead in seeking God's wisdom and peace for your meetings and for Pasco County. We've been praying for Pasco County for years personally, and holding weekly prayer for Pasco meetings each Tuesday morning for years, 9:00 a.m. at Oasis Coffee Spot. You have each been prayed for by name regularly. We have been organizing the National Day of Prayer at the Government Center since 2006, and participating in it even before that. We represent a wide cross-section of the Christian faith in Pasco that has also characterized our nation since its inception and continues today. If after starting with meetings on this side of the county, you wish to encourage pastors, spiritually stockholders, to do their part, on the east side, we'd be confident that we could organize that. We have been doing this in Port Ritchie for years. We have a couple of chaplains there, so we're able to go in and pray, encourage, and meet with them. And so, we would be honored that, as you see Scripture rise, the priests and the kings. You represent the kings doing the governing, and we should be the priests that pray for y'all, help hear what God says, and encourage you, cover your backs, and make a way that the Lord goes before us. So, may God bless you, may His wisdom fill you. This next year be a great year of making decisions that'll take Casco County where it's never been before. God bless you, and thank you."
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Pastor. Merry Christmas.
Aisha McTowles, followed by John Hedon.
Good morning, guys. Well, congratulations on the shift in positions. I just wanted to tell you, it's an honor to be here and to speak on behalf of Pasco County as a resident. My name is Aisha M. Towles at 14223 Pemberton Drive, Hudson, Florida, 34667. And I just wanted to piggyback off of Pastor Leonard in regards of the positions of authority. Just as things have been shifting, you guys have been called based on your area of expertise. I think it's very important that we have our leaders, that God has called, to cover you guys and take our, our positions to be the voice for what the Lord is doing in this season. We all have different places of authority, different places of relationship and wisdom, and I think that for us to go forward as a community, as a county, we need to make sure we're all in position and to be covered in prayer by one name, Jesus. We can speak very broadly in certain conditions, but there's no power in that. We can speak to a generic God, but we know there's no logic in that. So, I'm just praying for the wisdom, because as we see on the news, as we see in the, the media, as we see, you know, we gotta look past our little areas of our neighborhood, our gates, our fenced-in homes. It's greater and bigger than that, and it's going to take all of us in our positions, whether it's spiritual, it's needed; whether it's natural, it's needed. So, I just pray that we come outside of the four walls, and we begin to look in a broader spectrum and see what will work. There's power in prayer. My personal life has been impacted great because of the name of Jesus. I've been able to speak to mountains in my way, and they've been removed. I've seen healing in the land of the broken and the sick, and they've been delivered. But it's only one name, and every knee shall bow, and every tongue shall confess under the name of Jesus. So, I just sound the alarm to all of us, whether we're on the podium or whether we're sitting in the back. We need to be in prayer, in authority, and in real belief that Jesus is Lord, and I know that I know, we will see a difference in the minds of people, in the hearts of people, and in the lives of people. So, I encourage you in the good fight of faith, with all love for all mankind, we can bring the change if they see it in the hearts of the people by the actions. Be blessed in Jesus' name. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. John Hedon, followed by Nick Morendo, followed by Pastor Troy Peterson.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you briefly. I did not know that I was going to be doing this. I came to the meeting, didn't realize I was going to be speaking to you. My name is John Hedden. My last name is H-E-D-I-N. Do you want me to give my address for the record?
Yes.
2624 Country Place Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, 34655.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to keep this very brief, because it was very unexpected. I have been following Jesus for about 40 years, and in the time that I have been walking with Him, He has done many things on my behalf, and worked many situations out, worked through me, and, you know, I consider it a real privilege to intercede for all of you. I just started doing that recently, praying for each of you and for all of the different agencies, including, you know, social service agencies, social service interest, infrastructure, and just have a real desire to serve and to, to pray for each area of society, and so that Pasco County will be a shining, you know, light upon a hill, that people of faith can work together to see everything that God would like to see as a part of this community. And I'm very excited about the expansion of the community, all the, I'm praying for the, the development of kind of a convergence of new technological things, you know, the Moffitt Cancer Center, and, you know, I've just been researching it recently, you know, just out, the property on highway between 589 and 41, just south of Highway 52. Looks like an amazing, oh, this looks, looks like my time is up.
You have another minute.
You have one more minute.
What was that?
Yeah, one more minute.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize. Anyway, that looks like an amazing, I've just been doing some research on it, it's a development, you know, Moffitt Cancer Center, and, you know, it's like a, like a technology and healthcare, like, complex, and I'm looking forward to seeing the property for the first time and the development of it. I don't even know if it's open yet, but I have just been reading about it online. So, anyway, I just believe that many people are going to come to Pasco that do not now reside here, you know, moving from other states of the country, and that there's going to be an economic and spiritual revival.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think it's Nick Morendo, followed by Pastor Troy Peterson, followed by Mike Haddock.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Merry Christmas. I'm on, I'm here, and I want to first thank you for your ruling on the LGBTQ, on the supporting the library. I just wanted to tell you, it's an honor to be here and to speak on behalf of Pasco County as a resident. My name is Aisha M. Towles at 14223 Pemberton Drive, Hudson, Florida, 34667. And I just wanted to piggyback off of Pastor Leonard in regards of the positions of authority. Just as things have been shifting, you guys have been called based on your area of expertise. I think it's very important that we have our leaders, that God has called, to cover you guys and take our positions to be the voice for what the Lord is doing in this season. We all have different places of authority, different places of relationship and wisdom. And I think that for us to go forward as a community, as a county, we need to make sure we're all in position and to be covered in prayer by one name, Jesus. We can speak very broadly in certain conditions, but there's no power in that. We can speak to a generic God, but we know there's no logic in that. So, I'm just praying for the wisdom, because as we see on the news, as we see in the media, as we see, you know, we gotta look past our little areas of our neighborhood, our gates, our fenced-in homes. It's greater and bigger than that, and it's gonna take all of us in our positions, whether it's spiritual, it's needed; whether it's natural, it's needed. So, I just pray that we come outside of the four walls and we begin to look in a broader spectrum and see what will work. There's power in prayer. My personal life has been impacted great because of the name of Jesus. I've been able to speak to mountains in my way, and they've been removed. I've seen healing in the land of the broken and the sick, and they've been delivered. But it's only one name, and every knee shall bow, and every tongue shall confess under the name of Jesus. So, I just sound the alarm to all of us, whether we're on the podium or whether we're sitting in the back. We need to be in prayer and authority and in real belief that Jesus is Lord. And I know that I know, we will see a difference in the minds of people, in the hearts of people, and in the lives of people. So, I encourage you in the good fight of faith with all love for all mankind, we can bring the change if they see it in the hearts of the people by the actions. Be blessed in Jesus' name. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. John Hedon, followed by Nick Morendo, followed by Pastor Troy Peterson.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you briefly. I did not know that I was gonna be doing this. I came to the meeting. Didn't realize I was gonna be speaking to you. My name is John Hedden. My last name is H-E-D-I-N. Do you want me to give my address for the record?
Yes.
2624 Country Place Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, 34655.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna keep this very brief, because it was very unexpected. I have been following Jesus for about 40 years, and in the time that I have been walking with him, he has done many things on my behalf and worked many situations out, worked through me. And, you know, I consider it a real privilege to intercede for all of you. I just started doing that recently, praying for each of you and for all of the different agencies, including, you know, social service agencies and social service infrastructure. And just have a real desire to serve and to pray for each area of society, and so that Pasco County will be a shining, you know, light upon a hill, that people of faith can work together to see everything that God would like to see as a part of this community. And I'm very excited about the expansion of the community, all the, I'm praying for the development of kind of a convergence of new technological things, you know, the Moffett Cancer Center. And, you know, I've just been researching it recently, you know, just out the property on highway between 589 and 41, just south of Highway 52. Looks like an amazing, oh, looks like my time is up.
You have another minute.
You have one more minute.
What was that?
One more minute.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize. Anyway, that looks like an amazing, I've just been doing some research on it, development, you know, Moffett Cancer Center, and, you know, it's like a, like a technology and healthcare, like, complex. And I'm looking forward to seeing the property for the first time and the development of it. I don't even know if it's open yet, but I have just been reading about it online. So, anyway, I just believe that many people are gonna come to Pasco that do not now reside here, you know, moving from other states of the country, and that there's gonna be an economic and spiritual revival.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I think it's Nick Morendo, followed by Pastor Troy Peterson, followed by Mike Haddock.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Merry Christmas. I'm on, I'm here, and I want to first thank you for your ruling on the LGBTQ, on the supporting the library for that. Thank you for your, for your outstanding work there.
Name and address. Name and address for the record.
I'm Nick Morendo, 6051 Cheers Drive, Port Ritchie.
Okay.
And I'm here on behalf of Pasco County Somebody Cares Chaplains in the leading of the invocation. And I have a docket here from the Town of Greece versus Galloway. The docket number is 12696, the Second Circuit ruled on May 5, 2014. Holding the town's practice of opening the town's board meetings with prayer offered a members of the clergy does not violate the Establishment Clause when the practice is constant, consistent with the traditions long followed by Congress and the state legislatures. The town does not discriminate against minority faiths in determining who may offer a prayer, and a prayer does not coerce the participations with non-adherence. Judgment, prayer offered may members, by members of the clergy, does not violate the Establishment Clause of the United States Constitution. In an opinion by Justice Kennedy on May 5, 2014, Justice Scalia and Justice Thomas joined the majority opinion. And so, we have this case here that's, that's, that shows that we could, we could have the right to do the prayer before opening, have our leaders in faith do it. And so, we just ask that you recognize it, and do you consider that we speak in the name of Jesus and that we pray with power and might through Christ, Jesus who strengthens us? We know that. And we know why we're, where we're at, because we took God out of everything. So, we need to bring him back into the public, the arena of government. And so, we need to stand for, for Christ, and for the season is the reason. I mean, this is why we celebrate Christmas, is because of the Lord who come and give us freedom and mercy and just. So, we just thank you. I want to thank you again, wish you a Merry Christmas, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor Troy Peterson, followed by Mike Haddock.
Good morning, Chair, new Chair, Commissioners. Troy Peterson, 6827 Sandra Drive, Port Ritchie, Florida. You know, often I come here and, and I just appreciate Commissioner Mariano and Commissioner Whitman. The last time we did the National Day of Prayer Resolution, I came across that video on YouTube, and I shared it all over. And you know what happened? I got blocked off Facebook, and my account got locked out. So, that tells me we're hitting the bullseye. That tells me we're doing what God has called us to do, you know? And as I reached, I gotta laugh about that. You know, as I reached out to Anthony Verdugo, Christian Family Coalition, you know, working with our, with our governor in Tallahassee, and, you know, one of the comments was, was made by one of our commissioners, that if Somebody Cares Pastors can pray, you know, in the State House, you know, with our governor, and we can pray in Port Ritchie, why can't we pray here, you know? And it was said that we were gonna get with our attorney and, and take a look at this. Well, you know, and I understand you guys get a lot of emails, okay? And so, I apologize if I didn't press into that more and you didn't get the email. But basically, I'll send it out again. And so, what we're looking at, according to Rule of Law, Town of Greece versus Galloway, docket number 12.9, or .696, Second Circuit of the United States Supreme Court, citizens are entitled to the constitutional protection and cannot be disputed. That the Constitution, the, the government said in seeking the refute, that argument, refute argument does not allow the creation by government of a forum, of a private prayer. And so, what this is recommending, and what we are recommending, is that this section of this law of government docket, which suggests that governing, that government bodies should take the steps to clarify a reasonable and informed observer, and that would be Somebody Cares Pasco leading in the invocation. So, I'll resend that email out to you guys, and you can, Jeffrey, you can, you can take a look at that, and we trust that you guys will make the right decision. Merry Christmas and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Abigail, wanna say something to us today, or?
Yeah.
Merry Christmas, Abigail. Sir, name and address for the record.
Not on the paper.
My name is Mike Haddock. I live 4942 Hammerhead Drive, Newport Ritchie. And I'm here with a number of our residents to represent the 532 residents of Sea Forest Beach Club, just to ask you to approve our 46, or 64 and 65, the annexation of the misnamed Town and Country Villas into Newport Ritchie. We would really appreciate the opportunity to allow the city to make the changes needed in that area, add the streets, the lights, and so forth for much higher level of security. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No clapping.
Mike, oh, we got one more.
Okay.
Name and address.
I'm not sure where this falls on your agenda today, but this has to do with the land use on the estates in Beacon Woods East. My name is Gordon Warren. I live at 13609 Woodside Drive in Beacon Woods East. Been there for 30 years. I'm very familiar with the Langs Golf Course, and the HOA resides there also.
Sir, that is a public hearing this afternoon.
You can speak at that, right?
Yeah, I mean, the appropriate place to speak to that item is the public hearing that's Item 78. If you wish to make your comments, you can take public comment now and do that, but the, the actual hearing where they will be voting is a public hearing, and it's at the end of the agenda today.
All right, very well. All right. Come back. Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, I have no one else signed up. No one is on WebEx. I don't know if you want to do just one more call out?
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak to any item in our purview? Okay, come forward, state your name and address for record.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm John Michael Moore, and the president of the Pasco County Professional Firefighters. We reside at 21735 YMCA Camp Road, Land O' Lakes, 34639. Firefighters are at increased risk for anxiety, depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, alcoholism, and suicidal ideations. Coupled with the stress of normal life, my members endure long work hours, sleepless nights, tragedies of death and dismemberment in an overall high-stress work environment. To overcome these challenges, our organization has established the IFF Peer Support and CISM programs to facilitate proactive education about early recognition of mental and behavioral health crises. We provide initial diffusing at the crew level following certain call types, such as the death of a child or those emergency calls that involve great bodily harm. We collectively have changed the culture within the Fire Rescue Department that instigates open dialogue about the risk factors we face as first responders and encourage our members to seek professional help proactively. In collaboration with the Fire Rescue leadership, we continue to develop a leading-edge framework from which to build upon. Where we need your help is before you today on consent, is Item C-54, with the contract award to Tampa Bay Psychology Associates. This award will provide a singular, focused, and comprehensive third-party plan for first-responder-centric professional mental health counseling for our members, and is the vitally important next step of the program design. By approving this item, you will be sending a clear message to your firefighters that your public safety priority is their well-being both on and off the job. Thank you in advance for your continued support of the men and women of Pasco County Fire Rescue.
Thank you. Mr. Chair? I'd just like to thank our firefighters, the chiefs and the union guys. You guys do a fantastic job. I see you around, zipping around the streets and the highways and 54, and I just want you to know you're appreciated, you're prayed for, and, excuse me, and what you said about the mental health issues is very, very true. Get help, it is important. Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing now? Thought I saw someone. Okay. When you get to the podium, please state your name and address.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Bernie Chilton. This is my wife Valerie Chilton. Reside at 9731 Sandstone Lane here in Port Ritchie, 34668.
Thank you very much for letting us speak. We are here also on behalf of the initiative to, to encourage that we have prayer, opening prayer at the beginning of our meetings. We are with Full Gospel Bible Teaching Fellowship. I am a chaplain with the Pasco Community. We have served this area since 1978. We come alongside with Somebody Cares Pasco, and we also pray. And we lift each of you up individually often, because we know how important it is. Just as this fellow was speaking about the mental issues of the fire service, I was of Pasco County Fire Service many years ago and served. And I just want to let you know that we want to read something from James 3:17 to understand what wisdom from above is. You are faced with chaos often. You, even amongst you, are trying to find peace and the right solution. You serve from the small to the tall, from the young to the old, from the rich to the poor, from the weak to the strong. And it's difficult at times, but Father God, he sees it all for you, to prevail upon you, that wisdom from above. You don't seek for your own growth or your own lifting up. You're seeking for the needs of the county. You're seeking for the needs of the people. And the county grow here, these people, they will flourish and move in the state, and they'll move up into, they will move up into the national level. We come alongside each and every one of you. We serve also in the National Day of Prayer. Many of you, we have come up alongside of you to, to, to reach out, to give a hug, right, Commissioner Jack? I mean, some of you do recognize us. But we just want you to all understand, even in the building here and even here, we lift you up. You've been placed here under authority by God Almighty, but we need to lift you up and keep you strong so you can make the right decisions for all. He'd like, Bernie, we'll go ahead and speak.
As it says in the book of James in Chapter 3, "The wisdom from above is first pure and peaceable, gentle, and easy to be entreated, full of mercy and good fruit, without partiality and without hypocrisy." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else here to speak to public hearing today? If you are, come forward now. Seeing no one. Mr. Cabala, I have a, I have a time certain for R-63 for 1010, which were passed.
That's, didn't, you already do that?
Well, that's, that's a women's.
Yeah, that was the original With La Cucchi.
Oh, that was original With La Cucchi, okay.
You've already heard that certain.
All right. I was thinking it was something else. Okay. This time, instead of going to Res 1, we're gonna start with Res 3, or your group here? Jack?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, you haven't officially closed public comment.
Okay. This time, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to Res 1.
Res 3?
Res 3, excuse me.
All right. If you are here for the recognition of professional women in business, if you could please come to the podium, specifically, I have, let's see, Amber Mariano Davis, Sandy Graves, Marilyn Deschamps, Dr. Paula O'Neill, Debbie Mans, Margaret Sutherland. Let's see, Elaine Toddneary. Did I pronounce that correctly? Toddneary, okay. How about the Greater Pasco Chamber of Commerce?
Okay.
All right, so these amazing women need to step closer to the podium.
You act like you're afraid, but I think you're women that work in Pasco County, and I don't think you're afraid of anything, so.
These are pioneers. All right, I will go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 24-033, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing the importance of professional women in business in Pasco County. Whereas the Greater Pasco Chamber of Commerce was established in 1944 to link businesses with their leading area business members, officers, leaders, and managers, and elected officials to enhance economic growth and development. And whereas the Professional Women in Business was originally established as a book club and has grown to be the most predominant organization in Pasco County to provide support, education, networking, and empowerment to women business leaders from all industries in Pasco County. And whereas the Professional Women in Business would like to recognize the achievements of Pasco County women who have broken through the glass ceiling and risen above invisible barriers that have marginalized women when seeking career advancements. And whereas the Professional Women in Business would like to recognize the achievements of Amber Mariano Davis, the youngest state representative elected to the Florida, I'm sorry, let me start that over. Amber Mariano Davis, the youngest state representative elected in Florida history to represent District 36 in the Florida House of Representatives. Republican State Committee Woman Sandy Graves, founder of the Republican Club of Central Pasco. Marilyn Deschamps, the first female rotarian of the Newport Ritchie Rotary Club. Dr. Paula O'Neill, the first female Pasco County clerk and comptroller. Debbie Mans, the first female city manager for the city of Newport Ritchie. Margaret Sutherland, the first female council member for the city of Port Ritchie. And Elaine Toddneary, who revitalized the Pasco chapter of the National Organization of Women Now in 1966 and is the current chapter president. And whereas the Professional Women in Business of the Greater Pasco Chamber of Commerce are immensely proud of the achievements of these women and encourage women in Pasco County to continue the tradition of rising above barriers and empower all women distinguishing themselves in their roles in the community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby recognizes Amber Mariano Davis, Sandy Graves, Marilyn Deschamps, Dr. Paula O'Neill, Debbie Mans, Margaret Sutherland, and Elaine Toddneary as professional women in business in Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 5th day of December 2023.
For approval.
Second.
Motion pass. My goodness, what, what are we gonna hear today?
Good morning, Commissioners, and it is an honor to be here representing the Greater Pasco Chamber of Commerce Group Professional Women in Business. I did want to make one comment that I believe was missed, and I think it's my fault, but we won't go there. June 2, 1897 or '92 was the inception of Pasco County. There have been five female Board of County Commissioners since then. Commissioner Catherine Starkey is the longest-serving and fifth commissioner for Pasco.
Well, I think, I think Anne Hildebrandt served longer than me.
Was somebody longer than you?
Commissioner Hildebrandt.
But was she as pretty?
Had 20 years.
But I am the, I am the fifth woman, and, but Christina was the sixth, so we've had six, but I'm the fifth.
Sylvie Young was here for a long time, too.
But I think Anne.
20 years.
Anne was the longest.
Anne may be longer.
Thank you very much.
Well, we'd like to acknowledge you for your support anyway, Commissioner Starkey.
You know who else could've been up there is Michelle Baker, first female county administrator.
Well, hopefully, this will be, I will be addressing you annually and knocking on Commissioner Mariano's door to add to this phenomenal group of women. We are forever appreciative and honored to even represent them and be in the same room with them, including you two ladies. Thank you so much for your time.
Yep.
Is that the little Mariano baby in the back?
It is, yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Wesley.
Paula, go ahead and bring her up here.
How you got, bring him up.
My name is Lisa Farisi. I represent the Greater Pasco Chamber of Commerce Group Professional Women in Business. Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Paula, I left the office. I didn't see any baby in my office.
Special delivery. That's my grandson Wesley.
There you go.
We were not sure if he was going to. We weren't sure he was going to be able to make it today, but I wanted to let everyone take a look for Christmas and all, but yeah, it worked out perfect, so.
I think you got your, you'll get a lot of pluses, pluses, pluses with that grandbaby with grandpa, so.
Well, ladies, congratulations. Thank you all. Would you like to address us at all? I'm going to bring the plaques down. We'll take a picture in a second.
We're going to come down and take a picture. Dr. O'Neill, it's good to see you. Debbie, it's good to see you guys. Yeah, we'll say Merry Christmas to you all. Rest of the Commissioners stay here. Okay?
Was anyone going to speak? We're going to stay up here and the chair is going to go down there. So we'll get that baby in the picture up here tonight. That way Gary doesn't have to keep going.
I appreciate that.
See you, Gary.
Good to see you.
I need to bend my knees.
Do I need to stand on a chair?
Here we go.
Go ahead, Steve, we're ready. Thank you all so much.
Maybe he will follow you and your daughter in private. Who knows? Thank you, ladies.
Oh, I've got one. I do.
So good to see you. Thank you very much. You're good.
If you want, bring one to Amber and the other one's for Marilyn.
God, this new update.
Yeah, if you want to take Amber, that'd be great. All right, awesome. Lisa, thank you very much.
I had to work my phone.
All right, we'll move on.
Yep.
It changed so much, I couldn't figure out how to find the camera wrong.
We'll move on to res one. You got it?
Is Jeremy Delair here? Please come up to the podium. Did I pronounce your last name correctly? How does it, okay.
It's Delair.
I'm sorry?
Delair.
Delair?
Yes.
Okay, no E on the end. Delair. All right, I'm trying to get this right. I'll go ahead and read your resolution. Resolution number 24-031, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending Field Inspector Jeremy Delair for his heroic actions and dedication to the community. Whereas Pasco County Field Inspector Jeremy Delair has demonstrated exceptional dedication to his profession and the community. And whereas on October 10th, 2023, while stopped at a local Walgreens, Field Inspector Jeremy Delair noticed a deep gasping noise coming from a bathroom stall and knew this was someone gasping for air and unable to breathe. Jeremy immediately jumped into action to provide lifesaving care to an individual experiencing a drug overdose and a weak pulse. And whereas Jeremy alerted the pharmacist, who was then able to administer two doses of Narcan while Jeremy began chest compressions on the individual. And whereas the combination of the Narcan and chest compressions were able to successfully resuscitate the patient prior to the arrival of Pasco County Fire Rescue, who were then able to stabilize the patient for transportation to the hospital. And whereas these actions not only saved the life of a community member, but also served as a testament to the dedication, professionalism and readiness to help of Field Inspector Jeremy Delair. And whereas Jeremy has recently learned how to administer cardiopulmonary resuscitation CPR at a CPR class hosted by Pasco County, an example of how Pasco County offers life-changing classes through Pasco U. And whereas at a dedication, I'm sorry, at a recognition ceremony, Jeremy was awarded a Point of Light Award, which is given to recognize humanitarian accomplishments that occur outside of a team member's normal work duty. And whereas Field Inspector Jeremy Delair's actions show that the Pasco County Minimum Standards Team is compassionate about the wellness and safety of others and serves as a reminder of the critical role that public service employees play in our communities every day. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby recognizes Field Inspector Jeremy Delair for his heroic actions and dedication to the community. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this fifth day of December 2023.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir. Jeremy? You want to speak, ma'am? I just wanted to say we're all very proud of you. Your quick actions saved a life and everybody up here is very proud of you.
Thank you.
You can speak. Surely you can.
No, no, I'm good.
But we're so thankful for you and for your position and where you were at this time that it really paid off. Great things, great rewards, so. Continue the good work. And other Commissioners want to say something? Anything else? Ms. Whiteman?
Thank you, Chairman.
You, Chairman. Yeah, you know, to take the county up on the offer across training just goes to show you never know when. And all of us in here are always on call, whether a quick phone call to make or we took a couple hours worth of training, because you never know when, for whatever reason, it pays off. So thank you for going that extra mile and taking advantage of the course. And, you know, look, you saved somebody's life, so thank you for your diligence, thank you to our service, to our county and our citizens, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
And I would echo those sentiments, and I'm just really grateful that we have employees like you who go the extra mile and frankly, the role that you play besides that is a tough one, too. So I appreciate all that you do and I'm honored to honor you today.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say the same. It must be an awesome feeling to do that for someone, save their life. It's going to carry you well for life for a long time, but thank you for taking the extra step to take the class and then your great action, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I say a few words? May I say a few words?
Yes.
So I just want to say, when you're in that moment, it's scary. And to have a cool mind about you to go and seek the pharmacist so they can get the Narcan to be administered, I think that is very heroic. And then to continue to help with lifesaving efforts and to do the CPR, that's just amazing. So just from another citizen to another citizen, I just want to thank you for just stepping in and overcoming that fear in that moment and doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, if y'all move over here in the center and then I'll go down in front and if Mr. Cabala come up.
So she asked for a special dinner to eat.
Sure, you'd rather be with you guys than us.
She wanted my Italian pasta. I accidentally. What's that smell? I turned off the long, actually.
All right, I think we are good.
You good?
See everyone, perfect. All right, everybody right here? We're good. Thank you all.
All right.
Yeah. Cooks for three hours.
Oh, that's good, you have time.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to res two.
Okay. Turner Arbor, if you could please step up to the podium? Did I pronounce your name correct? Turner Arbor, okay, good. All right, I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 24-032, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing Turner Arbor for being named the 2023 Tony Jennings Workforce Development Professional of the Year by the Florida Economic Development Council. Whereas Turner Arbor has been passionately involved in workforce development for five years, demonstrating unwavering commitment and dedication to enhancing the professional landscape of Pasco County. And whereas the Tony Jennings Workforce Development Professional of the Year Award has recognized 16 people since 2007, including its namesake, former Lieutenant Governor Tony Jennings, a career source Florida President, and most recently Turner Abbott, who is the youngest professional to receive this high. Oh, my gosh, Turner Arbor. What did I say? Abbott, oh, no, 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 okay. We're going to go back. The most recent Turner Arbor, who was the youngest professional to receive this high honor, my apologies. And whereas Turner began his journey in workforce development in 2018 as an intern when the Pasco Economic Development Council, EDC, initiated the Workforce Connect Program. Turner then transitioned into the role of Workforce Development Manager. And over the next five years, he forged partnerships with local workforce training and education entities, created the WorkforceConnectPasco.com platform, and was promoted to Senior Economic Development Manager overseeing all business, retention and expansion, international and workforce programs. And whereas Turner has been instrumental in hosting the Pasco 50 event, an initiative allowing the top 50 employers in Pasco County to collaborate, share insights and benefit from discussions on pertinent topics such as mental health in the workplace and starting internship programs. And whereas, holding a Bachelor's of Science in Global Business, serving as career source Pasco Hernando Board Member and being a founding member of Pasco Hernando Local College Access Network, Turner's professionalism and expertise have influenced the outcomes of key initiatives, including making Workforce Connect a permanent fixture in the Pasco EDC's economic development plans. And whereas Turner's efforts in compiling extensive reports on labor availability, wages and workforce training programs were pivotal, pivotal, pivotal in attracting Gray Plastic Packaging Corporation to Pasco County in 2022, resulting in an investment of over $16 million and the creation of 555 new jobs. And whereas Turner's dedication has not only bolstered workforce development in Pasco County, but has also positively impacted Florida's economy by attracting more employers, fostering collaborations between educational institutions, nonprofits and businesses and innovating, innovative training, training programs. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby recognizes Turner Arbor for being named the 2023 Tony Jennings Workforce Development Professional of the Year for and for his exemplary services to the citizens of Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this fifth day of December 2023.
With approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. We have the stage.
What's that? I have a stage. I don't have a baby and I didn't save somebody's life, but I live up a little bit to it, but I want to thank the Commission, Chairman Oakley, Commissioner Mariano for supporting the resolution. Of course, the entire team at the Pasco EDC under leadership of Bill Cronin. Thank them all, my family, many of them are here today, and also the workforce development community that without them, it wouldn't be possible. The award from the Florida Economic Development Council is a testament to our community's commitment to our businesses and their workers through the Workforce Connect Program. And I want to thank the Commission for the continued support of that program through the Penny for Pasco. Workforce Connect was created to connect businesses to the talent that they need now and to help them plan for their talent needs in the future. Over the past five years, we've had the opportunity to personally help hundreds of businesses find and train their talent right here in Pasco County, and our website has helped thousands more. Through that fantastic partnerships that we've built between economic development and our workforce development community, we've been able to help companies like Infant Labs in Port Ritchie, connect with Wendell Carron Technical High School and take on interns from their biomedical science program. We've also helped companies like Delta Hydronics in Hudson upskill their employees through the AM Skills Program. And ConGlobal in Odessa, connect with St. Leo University and take on interns from St. Leo's new College of Computing, Artificial Intelligence, Robotics and Data Science Program, just to name a couple of examples. It's been success stories like these that also help Pasco attract new employers like Gary Plastics Packaging Corp. to Hudson and Bduco to Zephyr Hills. I believe Workforce Connect really gives Pasco County a leg up on other communities when it comes to attracting new businesses. It's been a blast doing this work through building relationships with our partners and local businesses, and I look forward to continuing to help our employers hire local. And it is kind of selfish work because I don't like sitting in traffic either, and every employee that we can keep working in Pasco keeps someone from having to drive 45 minutes to other counties. So thank you all for the recognition, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Chairman?
Mr. Mariano?
Yeah, Turner, you are a breath of fresh air in the economic development world. Your passion shows in your voice, your actions are phenomenal. You've got a great team with you, great leadership with Bill Cronin and company, but your passions just keep on driving a lot of great things to happen. We appreciate you here. We want you to keep on growing and keep on doing the great work you're doing. Thank you.
And I've enjoyed working with Turner since he came to us, and this is a great honor, Turner. Thank you, thank you for your commitment and great job. I'm so impressed, great job.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, Turner, you know, our job is to set strategic and quality policy that allows employers to come here and want to invest in Pasco County. And with that comes the need for workforce. And I hope that this board continues to be tremendous partners with you all as we grow our economy. We create Pasco to be a place where people not only want to live here, but they can work here and not have to travel as far. So thank you for your strategic efforts. And our board, I'm pretty confident we can say we're a fierce advocate for jobs, good quality jobs and strong economy for our county, so good work.
It's good to see you. Great job. Quality jobs is definitely where it's at. I know Bill Cronin's not here, but he's well represented by his right-hand man. And I saw him at a, up at 4G Ranch the other day. It's quite a place. Quite a place. Anyway, it's good to see you and Merry Christmas to you and your family. Great job. Just keep up the good work because we're going to keep bringing good businesses here, so you'll have a lot to do.
The job is never done.
Out it out. And I know you're ready to go when we get them coming into this county and keep our citizens working in our county.
this county and keep, keep our citizens working in our county. It would be a great thing for our county in the future, so, yeah.
All right, I'll come down, and Mariano comes down, and the rest of us stay right up here. And we'll take the picture.
Christmas colors. I have my scarf.
Okay, folks, the phone first, please. There. Camera here. Great, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Wow, great job, Turner.
Thirty-one, thirty-nine, forty-two, fifty-one.
Okay, that concludes our resolutions. We'll move now to the consent items. I have a pull sheet. Y'all keep adding to it. What'd you pull?
Twenty.
Twenty?
C twenty.
All right, I have a pull sheet with item C thirty-one's pull for discussion. C thirty-nine, pull for discussion. C forty-two, withdrawn. C fifty-one, pull for discussion. And then C twenty, pull for discussion. Okay, I entertain a motion for the rest of the items on consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion pass. All right, we'll start with C thirty-one.
C thirty-one, Mr. Chair, I just pulled it just to, I want to draw a highlight to the board as far as the amount of money going to all the cities. Newport Ritchie's at 3.5 million over the past, since '05, they've received a total of, coming with this check here, it'll be like $28,700,000. So I just thought we should know it. I'll move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion second. Any other discussion? Without any? All those in favor of this? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to C thirty-nine.
C thirty-nine, I just pulled that because I need to abstain from the vote. I abstained at the RAC committee as well.
Okay.
No discussion, but just, that's all.
Okay. Commissioner Mariano was gonna abstain from the vote, so.
Just, I can do it under Commissioner Items, but I may not be here for Commissioner Items. So I just want to say, I wanted to see a report on, on where the monies, the monies that we've received and where they've been allocated.
We'll, we'll provide that.
I talked to Mr. Carvalho about that the other day. I just.
Move approval for thirty-nine.
Second.
Got a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, like so? And show that Commissioner Mariano abstained. Okay, motion pass. Move on to C forty-two.
Withdrawn.
Yes, withdrawn. C fifty-one.
C fifty-one, I just want to bring attention to this. This is for Conne Line Road. As we work with Hernando County as far as doing that road, one of the key structures is going to be getting utilities in at a timely fashion, timely manner. Talked with Secretary DOT, which I think I mentioned last time we talked about this meeting, but David Allen's gonna be one of the people on the committee to make sure that when the road gets done, the utility's done at the same time, so it's a smooth, seamless thing. And I think it's a great accomplishment. I want to thank Reaper for jumping in, working with Northridge to bring this whole thing forward, which is gonna be a great project and provide some much-needed infrastructure in there. So move approval.
Second.
Got a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like so? Motion pass unanimously. All right.
C twenty.
Oh, C twenty.
I just wanted to say, I think here we have another missed opportunity. This is an item that came to us from the Sheriff's Office. You know, I've been in this neighborhood many times, and I'm pretty sure this was a house that, well, a trailer, that was causing a lot of problems in the neighborhood with drug dealing. I remember being there, and there was, there was a dog running down the street that had a hypodermic needle stuck in it. It's just, I'm glad that we were able to get rid of this residence. However, I think what we're doing is just possibly allowing for someone to bring in something else and continue that kind of use. This should have gone to someone like Habitat, who would have built a better, who would have built a home, some, would have got someone into homeownership and started cleaning up that neighborhood. So I'm, I'm not happy that we did, did it like this.
Mr. Baxter?
Yes, so Andrew Baxter, Facilities Management Director. This is a unique situation, whereas this property was seized by the Sheriff's Office, and technically is in the sheriff's name, and we are, we are being the, being their representative to help them dispose of the property to recoup the funds.
Yeah, but we, but we could have.
County property.
I'm just going back to the program that we had that got stopped, where we were working to better neighborhoods.
Absolutely. So we spoke with the Commission in late summer, and spoke to each one of you individually, and got your feedback on Habitat Homes and other things like that related to our surplus and disposition policies. That policy, the updates for all of that, will be coming back to you in January. And so that updated policy will be coming.
Once again, it's a missed opportunity to better that community. This is in, in Alfred's.
Right. Okay.
That's it.
That was just for discussion, no, no vote?
No, it's too late. We already put it out to bid.
No. We still need a vote.
You still need a vote.
Well, I mean, it's, we put it out to bid.
Oh, yeah.
And, I mean, can I, if I vote, if there were three votes that voted no, what would happen here?
The sheriff would retain the property, and we would have to discuss with them how they would like to dispose of that property.
So we could.
Andrew, the sheriff doesn't have, the sheriff can't, can't take title, title to the, the only reason that this is before you is the sheriff can't take titled property. So you are, you are acting as the agent for the sheriff on one of their, on one of the forfeitures.
So if I.
Recommendation would be to approve staff recommendation.
All right, well, I'm gonna vote no, just out of principle, because very likely we'll just be, continue being what it is.
I got a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. That's a nay.
Okay. Motion pass four to one.
Aye.
All right, that's the end of consent. We'll move to our items. What time we got? All right. Oh, that's that other item that was on there for eleven thirty?
Is Angle here?
No.
No, he's.
Sorter than you. I can't be, can't be behind you.
Maybe he's listening.
I ain't seen him find all this in my book.
R sixty-four and R sixty-five of the cities.
Find them.
The two interlocal agreements, sixty-four and sixty-five.
That's why we're doing that?
No, that's, that's.
That's the.
That's where we're going to get city councils.
So while Roy is getting this ready, there's two handouts that are left on the dais to relate to this issue, which is, one's called Identified Policy Issues with the Live Local Act, another one's called. Board Association, FACA, Growth and Environmental Committee, and Identified Issues with the Live Local Act. Those are, those were left on your dais if you want to pull those out for this discussion.
This is crazy. There are items in my.
What just happened there? What are we doing? We're towing something up here?
I'm trying to find.
This is.
Minor dais.
David is here for sixty-two.
All right, so. So there's, there's two.
Yep.
Relate to this discussion.
Sixty-two.
It is absolutely freezing in here.
Right here.
Freezing.
I'm cool.
It's gotta be, gotta be mid-sixties.
They're not in my book. That's not good. All right, I just got one resolution in my sixty-five.
You can go get extra copies if you need it.
So this is.
Left on the dais.
One number is yours?
It doesn't have a number on it. It just.
Oh, it doesn't have a number?
It looks, it's titled Identified Policy Issues with the Live Local Act. That's document.
Okay, all right.
Somebody could see, but. Those are. He wrote in your items. They say C. No, somebody could see on them, but that's the numbers.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Morning, Board. Mr. Chairman, Roy Major, Development Services. Myself and my colleague from the, from the County Attorney's Office, Dave Goldstein, are gonna facilitate a presentation on the Live Local Act. The, the, the purpose of the presentation is to remind the board of some of the concerns with the Live Local Act. Secondly, to update the board on recent events locally here involving the Live Local Act. And then Dave is gonna present some ideas to the boards, a list of ideas or alternatives for them to consider while we're working through some of these Live Local issues. You know, this, this slide here is, is the property which really brought attention and shined a light on the potential of Live Local impacting our community. And just to, just to showing this slide to refresh everybody's memory, here's a site on I-75 and Overpass Road, the northwest corner, which had 315,000 square feet of entitlements for commercial, light, industrial, and similar uses. And the landowner came in with a developer potentially to make this largely a multifamily property. And this is, this is really the, the project which brought this to light and got, got us thinking about this carefully. Some of the recap of some of the, some of the concerns that have been, have been discussed is the unfunded local financing liabilities, namely the ad valorem exemptions. You know, secondly, undermines job growth and the ability to work local. The increased demand on infrastructure undermines our policy of diversified tax base. And then there's multiple constitutional and implementation issues with this.
Before you leave this slide, so, one of the handouts that we gave you, it's the one that says Identified Policy Issues, that has a more detailed list of what, Roy just did a very quick summary, but we have identified at least 14 major policy issues with the Live Local Act, which are summarized in that handout. Go ahead, Roy.
Okay. Got a recap of current events, what's been going on with Live Local and projects here in Pasco County. This has been made a top legislative priority for our county to, for the legislature to take up and perhaps address. The county has sent a letter to the legislature, and the, as a result of the joint Pasco-Panellas-Hillsboro meeting about a month ago, a letter was sent, signed by those three board chairmen. In the last two months, last three months, we've received, a little longer than that, maybe four months, we've received 12 expressed interests or, or had initial discussions with properties potentially wanting to use the Live Local. We've had four pre-application meetings. Two applications actually submitted. One was quickly withdrawn, and one is being held right now pending a decision on, on how the board wants to move forward. The one that's being held is at Rowan and Bailey Road, just north of Trouble Creek Road, really not very far, very far from here. We have created a, a tool, a GIS layer, to help us track what these, what these locations are and where they are in the county. You know, currently, there have been 12 inquiries representing 10 different projects. This is a screen capture of that GIS map. The green flags show the actual location of those projects. And when you click on that, one of those flags, it actually gives you that parcel information and what the use is. So what we're going for here is as these come in, we can actually, you know, we can track them and, and present those to you or, or the community.
So Roy, before you leave this slide, so I think Mike said conversations about this too. We're a little bit of an outlier. We actually have more Live Local interest and applications than most counties that I've spoken to. Most counties that I've spoken to have maybe one, two applications. We've got significantly more, so we're sort of at the epicenter of Live Local when it comes to the number of applications that we have.
And going, going forward, we could further develop this tool and create a, a series of applications, GIS applications in this tool to set parameters and have it track various properties which are eligible for Live Local, and depending on how the board wants to go, we could actually use this as a tool to help track and inform the board on the, on the progress of, of any decisions that they make relative to the, the projects that are submitted. Truly with that said, I'll hand it over to Dave to kind of lead a discussion on some of the board's possible alternatives.
So before I do that, Commissioners, any questions about the number of Live Local sites that we have, or?
You got a question?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's important to note, every one of these sites is zoned on, what, C2?
I believe all of them are commercially zoned. Some of them are MPD, but I believe most of them are commercially zoned. Is that right, Roy?
That's correct.
Yep. So it's important that, you know, it's a shotgun blast. It's, it's important as we go into this conversation to know that these properties that we're targeting are job-creating sites, and we planned accordingly for those sites to do just that. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Mr. Goldstein.
So the first option that we've discussed, and the board's discussed this in the past, is the, what Mr., well, Commissioner Waitman has called the nuclear option. I call it the sledgehammer, sledgehammer option. It's kind of a blunt tool. It's the moratorium. You know, there's some pros and cons to a moratorium that we've discussed. The pro is that it's a useful tool to delay your, take a pause while we develop regulations. The con is that it's a blunt tool. So a moratorium's gonna catch some, some folks that maybe were never intending to evoke the Live Local Act. And even if you do kind of a targeted nodal-type attack through a moratorium, you may not catch some Live Local sites, because not all of our C2 zoning and I1 zoning is at a commercial node. So, and we have a map that we could show you, kind of a sample of how we could do a commercial node moratorium, but it's, like I said, it's a very blunt instrument. It's a sledgehammer, nuclear bomb. It, it's gonna catch some people that you didn't want to catch, and, you know, and it may not catch some people that you wanted to catch. Second option is a declaratory judgment action. This is basically what I like to call a friendly lawsuit. It's, it's basically asking a court to declare, you know, to address. So there's a, we identified a list of 22 legal issues, and there's another handout here that talks about these 22 legal issues. It would be asking a court to declare or get advice from the court on how do we resolve these 22 legal issues under the Live Local Act. Some of them are constitutional issues, some of them are ambiguities under the Live Local Act, and I didn't create this list of 22 issues on my own. There's actually a committee, the Florida Association of County Attorneys, the Growth and Environmental Committee. I've gotten some of the issues on list from that committee. So this, these are issues that have been identified statewide with the Live Local Act. So we're now at the 22 legal issues. So we'd be asking the court for a declaration of how we resolve these 22 legal issues. The theory would be that we cannot process these applications unless the court gives us advice on how to resolve these 22 legal issues. It's more of a scalpel approach as opposed to the sledgehammer or nuclear option, because it would only be basically suing those projects that actually intend to invoke the Live Local Act. It would not be targeting anybody else. Now, we would have to serve the Attorney General with the lawsuit, because if you're challenging the constitution, constitutionality of an act, you do have to serve the Attorney General, so they would have an opportunity to weigh in. The pros of it is, you know, it's a scalpel approach. The con of it is that all we can address in a declaratory judgment action is these 22 legal issues. So the 14 policy issues that we, that are on that list, those are policy issues. So the fourteen policy issues that we, that are on that list, those are policy issues. The court's not gonna be able to weigh in on those things. That's still gonna involve some legislative effort by the legislature. So litigation might be useful tool to resolve the legal issues, but unless we get the entire act thrown out as unconstitutional, the legislature's still gonna need to take some action to address your policy concerns. So I can't, can't get a court to solve the policy problems, but it can be an effective tool to clear up these legal ambiguities in the act. Other downside is anytime you're with litigation, there's gonna be some litigation expenses, particularly the second item on the legal list, the, the legal list about, you know, whether this is a charitable purpose for the tax exemption, whether it's a charitable purpose, that probably would require us to retain an expert witness to testify that these ad valorem tax exemptions are not for a charitable purpose, at least that's my, that's my opinion, but I would likely need an expert to, to hire an expert to testify to that. Third option would be that we just process the Live Local applications, um, the best we can, even though there's twenty-two legal ambiguities, just do our best to try to process them. But you do it without giving them any form of relief. The Live Local doesn't, Live Local Act doesn't require that you give them alternative standards or variances in parking, neighborhood parks, the typical variances and alternative standards that staff and you, you normally give for those, these type of projects, you don't necessarily have to give those for a Live Local project. So if you wanted to process them, you could do it in a way to tell, in direct staff and say, process them and don't give any relief. And then the fourth option would be just process them best you can, like any other application, and sort of just, you know, try to follow the law the best that you can. So those are the four options we've identified. I know, um, other commissioners, and some commissioners have raised other ideas such as downzoning all the property in the county. Don't recommend that, because you're also gonna have some unintended consequences, and I also think some potential claims against the county if we went ahead and did that. You know, the, the concept that was discussed was changing all the commercial zoning or industrial zoning to office. Well, the problem is with that is you may have a perfectly legitimate commercial business that was prepared to develop under C2 zoning, a Publix, a restaurant, now they can't do it if you changed their zoning to office. So I don't think that's a realistic option, and it may even result in some legal liability. So, um, it's really up to the Board as to how you want to proceed with this. I think staff and the County Attorney's Office are prepared to implement any four of these options. It's really up to you as to give us some direction on where you want to proceed.
Sounds to me like we ought to be doing the option two, where we ask the court to clarify before we move forward on, on those items, so. But what's the Board think? Ms. Starky?
Um, a question on the, um, uh, process applications in strict accordance. Will there be an issue if we do that for some, but not for all?
You're talking about the Live Local applications?
So, so we frequently are waiving the park requirements in a multifamily. If we do that for this, this regular zoned one, um, would they be able to come after us on a Live Local project if we didn't treat them, you know, if we did it on one, but not the other?
The only argument I think they can make would be equal protection, but I think there is a rational basis to distinguish a Live Local project from the other projects that are going through the process, because the Live Local project is getting exempted from land use and zoning. That's a big exception that they're already getting. So I think you could rationally say, you already got this big exception, which is exemption from land use and zoning, you shouldn't get any other exceptions. So I think there is a rational, if somebody brought an equal protection argument like that, I think I'd feel comfortable defending it, if that's the question.
So I'm wondering, um, if we proceed with number three, but let the legislature know we're gonna, if we don't get some relief, we'll go to number two. That's just a, um, a thought. Because I know this is the Senate President's.
So I gotta caution you on one thing, though. If you go with number three, it may be difficult to go back to number two, and let me explain why.
Okay.
Because number three, you're basically starting to process the app, because that, you're kind of evidencing the fact that you can process them. If you're asking the court, if you're telling the court, I can't process these applications because I'm in doubt on these twenty-two legal issues, then you start processing them. That calls in, now somebody could argue, well, you're not in doubt Pasco County, because you processed.
Okay.
You started processing the applications.
Alright, then.
There's a reason we're bringing this to you before we've started processing anything. So if you want to go with number two, my recommendation would be that you do it before you process even the first application.
So would that put all the, um, all of them on hold while we go through this court?
Effectively, yes.
Okay.
Well, I want to be clear.
Well, we have to do one.
If it puts them on hold for utilizing the Live Local Act, it would, they would not stop any of them if they want to go through our normal zoning, land use process, like the rest of the world.
Right.
They can still do that. And we've had, we've had some discussions with folks that may in fact do that, because they're fully aware of how our Board feels about the Live Local Act. And so they may in fact go down the path of just following normal land use and zoning. And I want to be clear, even if you elected option two, if an applicant had already filed an application and then they say, oh my God, I'm gonna be sued, if they withdrew their application, we would not sue them. If somebody says, we're not going to invoke the Live Local Act, we're gonna go through your normal process, then we really, there really wouldn't be a basis to be suing them for declaratory judgment, because they wouldn't be invoking Live Local.
Okay, so we're suing the developer, not the, not the state?
Well, there has to be defendant in any action, I want to be clear. You're asking the court for a declaration of our rights under the Live Local Act. There has to be somebody that you name in that lawsuit. In my opinion, that would be the, the entity that's invoking the Live Local Act, which would be the developer.
Okay.
But like I said, three of, the first three of these claims are constitutional claims. For those claims, if I'm, if I'm asking for a court to declare an act unconstitutional, I have to serve it on the Attorney General, the State of Florida, so.
But that wouldn't be a name, the State of Florida would not be a named defendant. There's a statutory requirement that.
Correct.
They could jump in.
Yes.
They could.
They could intervene, yes.
Yeah.
And, and maybe, it could be one of the developer defendants may try to bring in the state. I, I can't, but the problem with suing the state is there's always an issue about who you sue with the state. Do you sue the governor, do you sue, I mean, there, there's, in my opinion, the, the best defendant is the one that's actually attempting to invoke the Live Local Act.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
So I'm good with the initiating the declaratory judgment. I think it's a good first step. I think if it's not going to work, if we find issues with it, I think we've got to really look strong at going to the moratorium, um, and put that message out there. The process applications in strict accordance with no variations, alternative standards is a great thing. And if the first one works, then we're good, but hopefully, that would be enough incentive for it. But I think if, as a jobs poor county, and there's several of them out there, I think this could be devastating if any of these Live Locals get through. Because once one gets through, they're all coming.
Yeah.
And that would be devastating for our tax base, devastating for the whole community.
Yep.
From, from what I, Ms. Chairman?
Okay.
From what I understand, the difference between a hundred and twenty percent AMI in our market rate is not that different.
That's kind of, that's kind of the argument that we're making, if you look at the second legal issue, is that I think there's a very viable argument that that's unconstitutional to be giving a tax exemption to a for-profit apartment builder based on them providing rents at a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. At least in Pasco County, I think there's a strong argument, that's not a charitable purpose, that that's not an act of charity. And the Constitution clearly requires that you can only give tax exemptions for a charitable purpose. The legislature declared it was a charitable purpose, and maybe in some counties, it might be a charitable purpose to have rents at a hundred and twenty percent of AMI, but in Pasco, I don't think it is.
Yeah.
And I heard other counties at fact say it wasn't in their county, its market rate, and it makes a real unfair advantage to the regular apartment developer.
In my opinion, I think if this act had been directed to housing below sixty percent or eighty percent of AMI, this would be a completely different conversation. But in my opinion, this act is basically just subsidizing for-profit apartment builders.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Chair. Yes, thank you, um, Roy and David, and, uh, David Engel, he's not here, with all your, your work and your time with our office and dissecting the Live Local Act and understanding, it's been, it's been difficult. Our office has had, been having active and robust dialogue and negotiations with several Live Local projects. And, uh, they haven't been easy, and our county does not have the ability to negotiate. I mean, we're literally negotiating against ourselves, and it's been quite frustrating. And I think it's important that we move forward with, um, the de, the, the judgment against these, uh, sites, that way we can find time, and A, I think it'll wake the state up. I'm very disappointed in FAC for not taking a position on this. I, I don't know why we pay dues to them. This is their job. And we're a growing county. Pasco is known now, everybody's wanting to come here, whether start a business here or, or live here. And quite frankly, this is, this is gonna hurt us, to all the points that Commissioner Mariano made. So I think it's time that we, we enact judgments on those that are coming in through, through Live Local, and it gives us a leg to stand on as we work through, uh, how to manage these type of projects. And maybe, just maybe, this will be what, uh, helps the state take a, take a look at it this session, because we want to offer solutions, we want to help provide a way for folks to be able to afford to live, to have good quality, affordable housing in our community. But this is not the way, this does not help anyone but out-of-state apartment developers and investment firms. So I appreciate all your efforts in, in this exercise.
I feel like number two is what we need to be going forward to, so.
So I'm hearing.
Our best route. That's the direction, I think.
For number two, is that what I'm hearing?
I'm going with number two, but I want to be ready to go back.
Well, yeah, we've.
After that.
If it doesn't work, we're gonna try to find some other ways, so.
Hey, I will, I will caution you that litigation is generally not a fast process, so.
I understand.
I mean, it may be, it may be a while before we determine whether number two works or not. So it, many times, claims last a year or longer.
Will this evolve?
Yeah, and if I could just add to that, part of the, part of the plan is to continue to lobby for change. You know, uh, you know, we've got a number of, of policy issues that, that David has mentioned, and so we, we continue to work that during, during the process, and then whatever happens with these Live Local projects is, is what happens, whether they come in and seek rezoning through the normal process, that, that's a different ballgame. But we will continue to lobby, uh, for changes with the legislature this year and in future years to, to continue to make this right for jobs poor counties, you know, like Pasco County.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Everybody okay? Um, Mr. Waitman?
Thank you, Chair. Is this the time, do we want to bring up the Overpass site? I know there's representatives.
Sure. Sure. Do you want to put the, we can put that back on.
Yeah, so we've been actively working, this was obviously the one that, that really brought attention to how, what do we do with Live Local now that it's here? And the other site we're actively, uh, working to figure out is at fifty-four and Curly. That one's not ready to bring forward yet, there's, Roy can talk about kind of where we're at there, we're actually working through it. So the fifty, the, the Overpass and Curly Road site, um, it's been interesting negotiation, the, the, the partners in this project have really stepped up and have really been working well with the county to bring forward, uh, a much better product, um, including adding an opportunity for industrial on here, um, and, you know, keeping commercial, but there is a residential component to it. There is a representative from the Overpass site in the crowd, if he wants to come up and talk with. The reason that we're doing this, this is uncharted waters, we've never done this, in order to prevent it become, to become a Live Local site, it's really an active negotiation, and so it's, we're, we're working through in how to, to process things to prevent Live Local from happening. And I, I'd be anxious to see what the Board thinks about the, the plan that they've come up with. Mr. Engel's not here, but I'm fairly confident he's, or anybody from his office, said that this, the new plan actually adds more value to the county tax base, uh, and it, and it provides, uh, more opportunity to the county. So I think this one's worth looking and talking about, that way we know what direction that we can give to the property owners and how the county, we move forward in negotiating these type of deals.
Yeah.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
David, we had picked out a different section a couple of years ago on, on apartment moratorium. Old Pasco Road's still gonna get improved, going all the way up. Could we take Old Pasco Road from Overpass Road to the north and just make that a moratorium area?
You can, you can do a geographic-specific moratorium, um, you know, I guess that would be up to the Board, but I think.
Old Pasco Road's already been a bit out.
They're trying to come in, so let me be clear. They originally said they wanted to invoke Live Local. They now have said, they didn't get a very warm reception from the county when they said that. So they came back and said, we'll redo our project, we do need some residential in it, but we're willing to provide some non-residential as well, we're willing to provide some townhomes and not, it could all be apartments. But the two requests they made were, one, that we, that they want, they're willing to go through the zoning and land use process, to be clear, so the same process everybody else follows. But they did ask for, and I don't know if they're here, but they did ask for it to be, the review to be expedited, and they asked for a waiver of the application fees for the zoning and the land use change.
And with the industrial.
Yeah, they would also have a industrial component as well. So, um, I think the Commissioner Waitman's point is, the question for the Board really is, is that something you're willing to entertain? I mean, if you are willing to entertain it, there'd be no point to do a moratorium on it, because that means it's something you would like to have. So I, I think that's ultimately Commissioner Waitman's question, is, is that something, are you willing to entertain? Because previously, the Board said no residential at all on this site. That was previously, in the comp plan now, it says, no residential at all on the site. The question is, is that something, would the Board consider a mixed-use project on that site?
And I'm gonna say, we built a, Ms. Chairman? Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, we spent a lot of time picking these sites to the south, we put that industrial park down below. I will tell you, the money spent on the interchange that we put our own money into is huge. When, and I drove by from, let's say, at fifty-two down Wirt Road.
Right.
Not Wirt Road, but Curly Road swung all the way around there, watched it through, drove through there, got all the way to seventy-five. The, it flows. I, I wasn't there at prime time as far as traffic goes, but from, I, what I'm hearing from there to Hancock over, you try to put more residential that you don't need to, it's gonna be a disaster. Old Pasco Road from all the way up, I'm glad it's gonna be bid, but again, from, from that intersection all the way up, if it means moratorium, we need jobs. This is a key, key spot. You've got great demographics in Wesley Chapel, that people are gonna want to stay. You've got, to the south, you've got all sorts of apartments already. Was it seven thousand apartments coming in? And now you're gonna throw more into there? I mean, really, we need to keep the jobs here. And, and I'm comfortable, just like we did before, take Overpass Road, take it all the way up.
So I want to be clear, though. If you invoke option number two, the Board just did, they really wouldn't be able to invoke Live Local on the site unless they win the lawsuit, basically. So.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what a moratorium does for you, it's already, their only choice would be to, currently, the comp plan says it has to be commercial, or, or office or light industrial. So that's the status quo. The only way somebody gets around that is to invoke Live Local, which under option two, we would be filing a declaratory judgment action against them. So I'm, if you're just trying to keep this site commercial, you don't need a moratorium for.
Who said?
For all of Overpass Road. If, if you're trying to stop any multifamily from occurring anywhere in Overpass Road, I guess that's, that's an option, but I don't think, I don't want you to think you need a moratorium just to stop.
Yeah.
This site from becoming residential. It already is prohibited from being residential in the current comp plan.
So if we go with number two, then that.
And like I said, I'm good with number two first.
Yeah.
But.
I'll.
I just want to send a message that's strong, we need jobs right there.
Right. Yes, Starky?
If the applicants here, I'm willing to listen, because I haven't had that opportunity to hear what their thoughts are, but.
Well, we had a time certain at eleven-thirty.
Any, any residential that goes on here, that's off the tax rules, I would not be okay with. So I, my preference is kind of to leave.
Well, yeah, I want to be clear, they did agree to waive the tax exemption, the Live Local Act tax exemption.
Well, okay, and, but a hundred and twenty, are they gonna do a hundred and twenty percent AMI?
I think they would just do market rate rents. I think they would just do market rate rents.
Well, that's what that is.
It wouldn't be an affordable project at all anymore.
So, so they're bargaining of, they won't do Live Local, but let us have residential? Is this a vertical mixed use or is this a mix of uses on a property?
They're not proposing vertical mixed use.
Yeah, so I would, I would probably be for straight commercial, keep it commercial.
The applicant's here, I welcome to say if I said that wrong. Is the applicant here? Are my facts accurate? Okay. They're proposing basically horizontal mixed use. There's, there's a, my recollection of the site plan is it had some commercial and office, maybe light industrial on the frontage of Overpass Road, I'm sorry, on the frontage of Old Pasco Road, and then it had residential and some townhomes and apartments in the back.
You know, typically, I say near an intersection with a lot of public investment, that's a good place for density, but there's so much on Overpass Road already that concerns me. And I just think that, that needs to be jobs, jobs, jobs on that, that corner.
Well, it really needs to be because we spent $65 million of citizens' money toward, toward this interchange, and we need to go forward with what's best for the county.
What's the piece just north of this red piece? Oh, I can, let me use my little thing. Oh, no, it doesn't work. It only works on the wall.
It doesn't go on a screen.
Okay.
I think there is a vacant piece that was part of the, there's a residential MPD to the north, which I think is Grantham Ranch, if I, my memory is correct.
Okay.
They had a small piece of their MPD which they're not really using. I think this project to the south was talking about acquiring it for stormwater or some other purposes, but it's not, it's not really large enough to be its own development piece. It'd probably only work as, if it was incorporated into the property to the south.
And is that a wetland between that property and Overpass, the I-75, that long skinny piece?
I believe a lot of that is wetlands, yes. There, there are significant wetlands in this area, but the piece that we're talking about that's in red does have a lot of upland areas. It's a developable piece of, of property. We wouldn't have zoned it for commercial if it was all wetlands.
Chair? Chair Oakley?
Yes.
Thank you. The follow-up, though, I mean, we've had, I think we've had quality dialogue with applicant on there, and the fact that they've, they're, they're open to, if, if we work, you know, to make this have an industrial component, or if they choose to, to rezone it to an industrial piece, I, I think they need to give us a presentation that way we can see. Because until now, we had no negotiating power until we picked what we were going to do. And right now, it was just, okay, let's try to work as expeditiously as we can to avoid a Live Local product going on these sites. And it's even tougher negotiations going on at 54 and Curly Road. That's an interesting one, but we'll save that for another day. But I think we need, they, they put in the time and the effort, and we can do this during, I guess, maybe my commissioner times, if I have time certain, I, I saved everything for Live Local today. But I committed to them that they'd have an opportunity to present what they were thinking towards the board and get the boards, get the boards' take on it, since they were kind enough to go back to the drawing board and spend the amount of time that they have in coming up, coming up with a new plan. And so I, I'd say, bringing, I was going to bring it up last meeting, but we ran late. And we didn't have this, we didn't have David's, you know, legal direction that we have now. So I guess it's board preference on what we, what we want to do here.
So I want to be clear, anybody could, I mean, they, they can file an application to change the land use to PD to do what they're asking to do. The specific request that they made, I mean, the applicant, if I say this wrong, I'm welcome them to get up, was that they wanted that application to be expedited, and they wanted their review fees waived. That's the only thing that would require a board action is if you wanted to waive their fees and direct staff to expedite their application. Otherwise, if they just want to file an application to change it to PD in the normal course, you could react to that like you would any other application. It would just go to the planning department, planning department would evaluate it, determine whether they want to support it or not, or require some of it to be vertical mixed use, require more of it to be industrial. The specific request they made to us in those negotiations was, are you willing to waive the fees and are you willing to expedite the review? That, that was really their request, that the applicant...
Ms. Chairman?
Am I saying that accurate?
It's less about the fees than just the process and time, which...
Okay, so apparently, the main request is that the review be expedited, so...
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Years ago, when I first became elected, I went to a seminar, and I got to hear a attorney talk about how he's, how he dealt with the county commissions. He says, I ask for the most egregious things I can possibly get, could probably never even get, and let them go stew on that, and slowly work them down to where I get them to where I want to go. This is a prime piece of property. We've got a ton of money invested in it, and I don't want to start negotiating from their spots coming down. I think we're really going to protect that piece. And if it means the lawsuit first, and come right behind it with a moratorium, from there to go all the way up Overpass, just so we're protected, so be it.
Yeah.
But we've got to protect that piece. We've got too much invested, and the people don't want to see it. I mean, you heard the, what, we had nine o'clock the other night? That whole area is like all concerned, what's going to go on here? Now, for what's coming in, is going to be enough commercial on the other side to throw something else over there when you don't have to? It'd be crazy. And again, devastating for us.
Yeah. I'm in agreeance with that. So, anything else? All right. Do you have direction?
If we could get a motion to authorize the county attorney's office to file suit, a declaratory judgment action on those Live Local projects, which the county attorney and the chief assistant believe would protect the board's position.
And I want to be clear, it would only be those that file an actual application. There's a lot of the folks that have just had discussions with staff about Live Local. We would not be filing suit against somebody just for having a discussion with staff. So they'd actually, actually filed, actually filed an application and then state that they're unwilling to withdraw and go through our normal process.
Okay. Has, one question, has this property been closed upon or is it contingent, closing contingent upon approvals?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Do you matter?
Only the landowner and the applicant would know.
Not that it matters, I just don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll adopt the county attorney's statement for the motion.
Second?
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like so? Hearing none, it passing amply. So you have your direction.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. You know, I've got a time certain, it was at, on...
We can go to the afternoon, sir, if that's...
Well, how, how, I can't...
I want to take, so...
Yeah, I can't stay till nine o'clock like last time? I have to be somewhere?
We're not going to stay to nine o'clock.
Okay, I, I have to leave by, no later than 5:30.
Okay. We'll be done. We'll be done. Okay, so we'll recess for lunch and then come back afterwards, so...